So I'm calling this meeting to order. Do you want to hit the button or no? You're good?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Calling this meeting to order, and if you would all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item is the approval of the February 27th meeting minutes. So everyone had a chance to look at those?
Yes.
I have a motion to approve.
Summit.
Thank you, Kim. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Chair. Any comments, edits, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And with that, we move on to our presentation from our guests, and I will -- we have Lisa Terraccone, who's the Executive Director of Ticonic Resources for Independence. I don't see John here.
John, I have prior commitments, so he wasn't able to make it.
No excuses, no, there are no excuses. I must be --
He's here in the spirit.
He's often here.
John is here in spirit.
Sure he is here in spirit. I do not want to not acknowledge him if he was hiding somewhere. But with that, I will turn it over to you, and let me take one second to get to you.
Share your screen.
Sharing the screen. Pardon me, as I get used to, and then we go. That button there. This one?
Yeah.
Close screen, no, no. All right. We got there. So welcome, and thank you for being here.
Well, thank you, Mayor Smythe, for inviting me to talk a little bit about the Tivoli zoning amendment code. You were at the press conference over the summer that was passed on August 14th last year. And I think there are two documents, actually. This is the first one that you brought up, sort of a demographic overview of a rough estimate that we made regarding the number of people with disabilities in Red Hook, oh, sorry. And then the second document actually is the code itself, and which has the language and the zoning site plan amendment that was passed in the village of Tivoli last year, last August. Is a -- the code serves to increase ADA compliance within the village. So John Rossi, who you just mentioned a few moments ago, my co-chair of the Disability Obviously Partnership, which is a program of my organization, and the partnership, and we do have actually another member here, Paul Higgins, the partnership and Ticonic Resources promotes the full inclusion of persons with disabilities in all aspects of community life in Dutchess County, and I'm here representing both of those, my organization and DAP as well. So John Rossi and I began working with Tivoli Mayor Joel Griffith in January of 2023, during which time the mayor invited us to conduct a presentation to his village board, which is what I'm doing here, to provide a greater, to promote greater accessibility within Tivoli businesses. He asked for resource information to give an overview of the ADA to his board members. We met with Mayor Griffith several times following the presentation, and he informed us he would be working on amending the site plan approval process of Tivoli's village code to promote and achieve ADA compliance within places of public accommodation. And the document that you have up here on the monitor, that includes a specific language of this code, which, as I mentioned earlier, was adopted on August 14th of 2024. Although the ADA was signed into law in 1990, Titles 2 and 3 specifically are not adequately enforced. As a result, people with disabilities continue to face numerous accessibility barriers on a daily basis and feel excluded from being able to fully access places of public accommodation in their communities. The creation and passage of Tivoli's site plan approval promotes the message of inclusion, not exclusion, to not only residents of Tivoli with disabilities, but also serves as a model to every municipality across the county. I'd like to read a statement by Mayor Griffith that he, during the press conference we had at my organization, to acknowledge him for his leadership in this local law. So Mayor Griffith, quote, "The village of Tivoli is proud to assert the importance of inclusivity for persons of all abilities in our community. We have both a legal and a moral responsibility to promote compliance with the ADA. While Tivoli, like many communities, still has a long way to go, by codifying this assertion and assuming that responsibility, we are both broadcasting our belief and institutionalizing a mechanic for positive change." Without the governance for Titles 2 and 3 of the ADA, which is what the code is about, the Tivoli code, Dutchess County residents with disabilities are denied access to retail stores, restaurants, entertainment venues, public restrooms, and any other business or entity that is accessible to the general public. We recently, John Rossi and I, recently conducted a presentation to a group of local building inspectors with the objective of generating an open discussion regarding Title 3 compliance and challenges they encountered with enforcement. And we heard loud and clear during that presentation, which is several months ago, pardon me, from the group, from the building inspectors, there were about maybe 10 or 15 local building inspectors in attendance that day, that they lacked a proper code training to properly assess ADA compliance, and they expressed that Title 3 enforcement is not a mandated component of their training. In fact, they said it's sort of glossed over, and they were looking for more guidance from the county. I also sit on the, I'm also a stakeholder, as is John Rossi, member, stakeholder of the county executive soon Serena's new Think Accessible initiative, and we participated in a roundtable discussion several months ago, and at that meeting, I articulated what the building inspectors mentioned to us regarding code enforcement training. And we will be meeting with the Planning Development Commissioner to assess the viability of the county codifying ADA enforcement to a local code. So I don't want to take up too much time, but I want to thank you for this opportunity to present and to talk about the importance of this zoning code amendment and how it would benefit and promote greater accessibility and inclusivity for persons with disabilities across Dutchess County. And I want to thank you again, Mayor Smythe, and the board for the opportunity to present. I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any.
I do have one, and I know this is an issue that Tivoli has similarly, we have old buildings, and many of them are really not conducive to obvious changes. I think I mentioned to you, we have one new business, Megabrain, and he just put in a little ramp because he said, well, everyone should be able to come, and I just thought that was wonderful, but his step up isn't that high, so doing a little ramp was easy. Most of the other businesses, I'm just thinking of some of the others, it's like two steps up. And have you found, you know, as you're looking for ways to help business owners or building owners figure out ways to become more accessible, have you found some good opportunities there?
Yes, actually, when John and I presented before the Tivoli Village Board a couple of years ago, we did provide information on temporary solutions, how we could, you know, for instance, a lot of old building stock in Tivoli and across a lot of municipalities in Dutchess County. You know, buzzers on doors to alert personnel inside or business owners that someone needs assistance, QR codes for menus, curbside delivery for some restaurants that are, you know, but it's not -- readily achievable is a clause within the ADA. If a business is not, if it's not readily achievable to make it accessible, obviously it's not feasible to do so. But there are solutions that can address some of those issues, some of the ones I mentioned, you know, a temporary ramp, for instance, the sidewalk setbacks that preclude installing a permanent ramp, it would disrupt pedestrian traffic, a temporary ramp that can be taken out and in and out of a business or off, you know, to promote access to a business would be acceptable. A buzzer could alert somebody, a business owner, that someone's outside that needs a ramp, they could, you know, install the ramp and then remove it, QR codes, curbside delivery, some restaurants, a one restaurant, actually, Tivoli, I think it's a pizza place is doing that already. So those are somewhat solutions. In terms of the code that was adopted in August, it's basically for, and there is language in there, as you'll read on the document, it's not, it's if it's feasible to do so, if there's an opportunity to provide greater enforcement and enhancement for ADA compliance. And I think the importance of the code is that it actually puts language in there in the local law, and it does charge the building inspector and the planning, I forget the other official, with the assessment process to determine whether it would be feasible or not. Code enforcement official and village engineer. So that's the importance of that. New construction and any existing construction where you're going to expand the carbon footprint would be subject to this enforcement mechanism.
I ask because sometimes people are thinking, I can't, because my building is what it is, so to have these other ideas to -- now, do you have like a little chart or something?
I do.
I mean, I'm thinking we could put that on our website, we could give it to our building department to say, here's some, just think about it, some of these ideas aren't that hard.
Absolutely, and I will send that to you, Mayor.
That would be wonderful.
I have that, a couple of resource documents that I can send to you.
That would be great.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Okay. Lisa, thank you very much for being here, we really appreciate it.
Oh, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Well, because I'll just say, you know, we like to think about the whole village, and it's helpful to have the different perspectives, because those of us who are physically able often don't even think about the fact that others may not be able to walk up those two steps and how difficult that is. We have the hard part of our sidewalks are very narrow in the business district area. The state DOT many years ago decided they needed more roads, so they took away, they took away some of our sidewalks, so we're often envious of other communities that have these wonderful wide sidewalks. But we have what we have, and it, you know, just more people thinking about creative ways that we can welcome everyone is really the important thing, so thank you, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate it, thank you. More to come, more to follow. All right. I just need to cancel my share. Oh, did I not share?
It's all right.
Wasn't it up there?
It was up there, but not in there. There's too many of them, thanks.
Ah, yes, thank you.
You're the best who can.
We, you know, one day at a time. All right, the next item on the agenda is actually proposals for professional services. So did everybody got those copies?
No.
I didn't get those copies, and I need to read them out. So we did a request for proposal for water and sewer operator, sorry, forgetting my words here, and we had two bids that came in. The date for the bid opening was on February 28th, so we had two bids. One was from North Dome Operations, and for their bid, it was a total bid, it was a unit price per month to provide full operation services for the wastewater treatment plant and for the water treatment plant. And so North Dome Operations for the wastewater treatment plant, their bid was $12,500 per month for a total of $150,000, and separately for the Red Hook Water Plant, it was $12,500 per month for a total of $150,000, for a total of $300,000 for both operation services. And then the second bid came from H2O Innovation, and their bid for the wastewater was $12,420 per month, making it $149,040. And then for the Red Hook Water, it was $7,500 per month for $90,000. I will tell you that we are currently paying just under $2,000 for each of those things, so just under $4,000, times 12 would be $48,000, so this is a dramatic increase, and certainly higher than we were hoping. I'm not sure that we fully knew what it would come in at, and what I'm going to propose is that we not accept either of these two bids and give ourselves a chance to think about how we might, there are alternative ways to manage the operations of our two systems. So I will make a motion to not accept either of these bids at this time. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, okay, thank you. I do just want to comment, thank you for, thank you for being here, from H2O.
You're welcome.
So we'll be back in touch.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the business, on the agenda is our land use attorney is Rodenhausen Shale and Polidoro, our land use specific attorney is Victoria and Polidoro, and we have an engagement letter from them for the year 2025. This is an appropriate item that we should be doing on an annual basis or multi-year, should we so choose. This just sets out the rates that Rodenhausen charges, and they also have a pretty standard statement of client rights that went with the proposal. So I am, I would like to ask for a motion to authorize me to sign this letter of engagement. So moved?
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions, discussion?
I don't have a copy of it in my packet, but has it changed over time? Has it increased since over last year?
We haven't had an engagement letter for a while. Those are the standard rates that they have been charging. And also just to clarify, so we have a village attorney who handles all the village, all of the village legal work, except for the planning and zoning land use work, and this is what, this is what Victoria Polidoro provides for us. We do also have separately a labor attorney who specializes in labor and union negotiations, et cetera. For the land use attorney and the labor attorney, we do not have, we do not pay them a retainer, we pay as we go, whereas for the village attorney, we have a retainer agreement. Any questions? No. With that in mind, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, thank you.
You keep it if you want, though. I can have lots. The next item is part of the packet of additional documents that I sent you. We have for our health care, our health insurance, we provide health insurance to the individual, to an individual who has worked for the village for 20 years or more, and we have two retirees at this point, both of whom have hit the age where they are Medicare eligible, and so we are going to switch those two to Medicare and provide them with a Medicare Advantage Plan. I was presented with two Medicare Advantage Plans last week by our broker, which is Marshall and Sterling. We are currently using CDPHP for our medical insurance, and they offer a Medicare Advantage Plan, ironically, if they require two people, and both of our retirees hit the appropriate age within two months of each other, so that was very, that was very helpful on their part. I was very grateful. We cover the whole insurance, including deductible, and so I am proposing that we go to, so the monthly payment for Medicare Advantage is probably about half of what the full health insurance plan is, not quite half, but a little higher than half. So there are two plans that you have in front of you. I think there's a more specific information or piece, but one is 201, it's a PPO, and then the other one is 200. The biggest difference is there's more covered in the 201, it's a slightly higher monthly rate of $429.20, the other one is for $1260. I think it makes sense to go with the Plan 201. There's a lot of similarity, but there are a handful of things that are fully covered, and so the things that won't be covered, we will likely have the retirees send us, send us their receipts, maybe every six months, and the village will reimburse, because for our Medicare Advantage Plan, they don't have a health savings account, which is what is what we normally do. So I recognize that I gave you all this this afternoon, so I'm happy to push it on if you would prefer, and I think this one is pretty straightforward. It will ultimately be a way to continue to cover our retirees for less cost for the village. I think it's overall the win. So if you're ready to proceed, I'll take a motion, if not, we can push it to the next meeting. At the next meeting, I will have the rest of the health care plan, our plan starts May 1st, and so the, it's not, it's, there's an increase coming, not in the dental envision, but in the medical insurance, and so I'm working with the broker to see what we can do to provide the most efficient and maintain the coverage that we have provided for our employees.
I would prefer more time to look it over.
You got it, we'll move it.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, so the next item is something, it's in a format that you haven't seen, but it is something that we have discussed. So the first one is a resolution to move forward with a local law that updates and amends our vehicle and traffic section of our code, it's Chapter 190. If you look at what you have, nothing changes until, so there are two pieces to it. One is Park Avenue. We did temporary parking restrictions when the cooking and trails opened up, and we need to formalize those into our code. And so literally what that does is, and it's what we, what we did for the temporary restrictions, so Park Avenue on the north side, no parking in the entire north side from Linden Ave to, what is that, Old Post Road?
Old Post.
And then on the south side, from Linden Ave, no parking for 170 feet, and what that does is it takes it, so there's the one property on the corner on the south side where there are two entrances slash exits to the driveway there, it puts it at the far side of the second entrance exit to their driveway. It also gives, because people are coming around a corner, and while there is technically enough room to have a car parked and two cars pass each other, it's pretty narrow, so this just gives that much more space for people to see or to talk to the side while a car going west can continue to go. And so that's what the 170 feet from Linden Ave is. And then on Church Street Extension, because if there's a whole lot of parking for Park Avenue, people may look to park along Church Street Extension, so wanting to make sure that that intersection is not impeded by parking, making that, no parking on either side of Church Street Extension within, for 100 feet from Linden Ave, oh, from Linden Ave, that needs to change.
Yeah, that should be Park Ave.
That would be Park Ave.
Okay, right.
To draw back to having a new attorney who doesn't know our roads very well. I missed that. So that will change to Park Ave. So that's that piece, and so that's, and we may have had it at 200 feet on Church Street Extension.
I think we did.
But 100 feet is plenty. I'm not seeing really any parking on Church Street Extension, though I do think having no parking for 100 feet is a good idea. And then the next piece is, in our parking lot here, we made the change to the four-hour parking limit from eight to five, but we didn't specify the EV charging spaces, and so really the question here, first of all, it's, you can only park here when you're charging your car. The one question as I read this is, it's until fully charged or four hours, whichever is less, and it's all the time. That's not, from my standpoint, it should be four hours max from eight to five. The other question is, do we want to say you can, you can be there and charging only while your car is charging, and so whenever that is done, you need to move? And again, that runs into, if you're, if you start charging at 10 and you're done at 2:00 in the morning, do we want people to have to unplug at 2:00 in the morning? And if we, if we, the other question is, do we want to be providing a service where people can be plugging in for overnight, is really the question? So those are the, those are the questions that I have on this particular law. Thoughts?
Can I speak to one, oh, I'll add another thing, there's other things that I think we could add to this parking lot. As someone that, my family does use the charger at night, and it is tricky to wake up at 2:00 in the morning to move your car, especially when, you know, you have to have a parent at home and all that, trading it off, there is a window where I don't know that someone's going to go and look for the charger overnight, but I don't know what that window is reasonable to say, you know, like it's that. Because we do want people to use them, right? We do want people to come and feel like they can use the chargers if they need them.
Well, I do, we got those chargers with a grant, and part of the grant was to provide free electricity for a period of time. We're well past that time. I think the other piece that we, that doesn't need to be part of this law, but that we should consider is, is now the time for us to begin charging for electricity. And I would, I mean, it's not, it's not a huge expense, but it is one, and so certainly the question of overnight is, are we, is this a service that someone can provide for themselves in their home, for example, that the village is funding, if you will? So that's sort of a different question.
And that's what I meant, is like, we want people to be able to come and use them if they need it. Say, you end up here, and, you know, it's in the middle of the night, and your cars run out.
I mean, it is a slow charger, so for something that takes a long time.
It's, yes, it's a very slow job if both ports are being used.
Oh, does it change when, so when both are being used, it's slower?
Yes, yes, the speed drops by half, and it becomes absurdly slow, but from my experience. And obviously, I mean, we want to encourage people charging their car while they go and buy things in the business district.
Absolutely.
Primarily, not that we want to discourage people from charging their cars just because it's convenient to charge it there. I think, I mean, if we do, and I think we will ultimately, need to impose a fee on the electricity usage, hopefully that will be reasonable, but that will help take care of people leaving cars there forever. And you can set up the fee schedule like our dear friends in the town have with their fast chargers, so that if your car is there for more than an hour, it becomes prohibitively expensive.
Ooh, ah, interesting.
Yes. It's a rude awakening, you end up racing to, because every minute it's at the fast charger by the town hall. Because every minute it's at the fast charger by the town hall, it's like another buck or something. Every minute. It's ruthless.
Sounds like you learned the hard way, right?
So we don't need to go that far. But, you know, you can set up the pay structure so that it... It incentivizes, yes, sure, stay here, charge your car for a few hours, two, three, four, but, you know, after that period of time, time to move on.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I wonder if it would be beneficial, like, you know, keeping that the electric charger station works within the regular business hours at that four-hour increment, more or less, but then overnight continuing a similar cadence where then it charges instead of saying kicking you out when you have to move your car?
You just get charged.
Because I think the idea that Charlie was leading to is that the idea is to come and charge while you are participating in the village, like, businesses and contributing to us, not just a free place to charge your car.
Yes, so during business hours, we want people to charge for a bit and then move on. Overnight, you could set up the fee schedule so that it doesn't impose a penalty for more than seven hours.
And then you don't have to get up at 2:00 AM and figure out how to move your car. You just have to, you know?
Pay for privilege. So, okay, so what I'm... So what I'm hearing is that we should amend what we have here to state that it's until fully charged or four hours, whichever is less, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And after that...
How hard is it to set up the fee schedule? And does that have to be a separate part, like, other than this? I'm asking, what do you use, Jen, like you know? Do you know?
Well, from a software standpoint, a lot of people have done it.
Okay.
So it's possible.
But it's not something that we can say, magic wand, that's gonna be the policy today? Like, it's gonna take a little bit of...
Well, you would have to approve it as a board, because it is imposing a fine or fee.
Okay.
But I think once it's approved, it would be pretty easy to put it in place.
Yeah. Yeah, what I was gonna...
And then the... I was gonna say, being that the fine wouldn't be actually written into the code, but it would be like a C fee schedule.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. You'd jump on the numbers.
It would be an easier process.
And so what I will do is I will go back to the lawyer and ask our attorney and just ask, what will it take to initiate the charge for the electricity? And whether or not it makes sense to put it in here or to do it separately? I'm kind of feeling like that's gonna be a separate thing. And I don't know if it's a resolution or local law or whatever, but I don't know the answer.
I think it's a fee schedule. Exactly what Charlie said. You just somewhere, you know, like, you know...
References.
You have to make a rule, though, that overnight, you must abide by the parking fee schedule. And then you have the ability to have flexibility.
I have a couple of comments not related to the EV charger. Is that... It's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, one before, you also need to decide if you want to do the fee schedule throughout the day or just overnight. That would have to be decided.
We could do it throughout the day and then make the fee zero during the day, right? That could be, we just have a fee.
I think that's possible, yes.
Yeah, so we could... We could make 8:00 to 5:00, no charge, but a limit of maximum for four hours, and then have a fee. I mean, that... But that, we can...
Do a fee.
We can indicate that there's a fee schedule in the law, and then the fee schedule is something that we can update, you know, by resolution.
So maybe we don't want it to be the fees just at night?
Well, I'm thinking that what we should do is articulate that until fully charged or four hours, whichever is less from 8:00 to 5:00, and then otherwise, while you're... While we're charging?
Otherwise, fee schedule.
Otherwise, fee schedule? Yeah, probably that.
You refer to...
Because it would only refer to the EV stations, the extended time.
Right. Otherwise, fee schedule. So that would indicate whether...
Like, if somebody was visiting...
Or additionally, see the fee schedule.
If somebody was visiting a business that they came in earlier, sort of like mid-late afternoon, and stayed for four, you know, for four hours, but some of our restaurants stay a bit later than, you know, 6:00, when our regular parking goes into... Our time limit is up. So then therefore, you know, they wanted to stay till 10:00 because they were enjoying some of the restaurants. It would just kick over.
Yeah, so I'll just get... I'll get the legal language to put that in. So we'll just leave it as overnight is based on the fee schedule, so we can decide how we want to do that. And obviously, when you stop charging, the fee should go up to incentivize folks to not stick around.
Okay, that's great.
And they tend to talk about it as like a parking fee at that point.
Right. So are we done with that conversation?
I have one comment to add to the EV station. Would it be worthwhile in this conversation? Like, I know our regulations are only four hours. Do we have somebody monitoring the lot, so in case people are not moving at four hours? Or would implementing a fee for charging if the car is there for more than four hours?
So we have the information about how long someone is charging and whether or not someone's still plugged in and they've stopped charging and how long they are there. My understanding is that when you're done, you get an email, because in order to connect, you have to have an account.
Right.
So folks, I mean, in the very beginning, we had some folks who were staying for 20 hours and 18 hours, and we take it with them. And so, yes, we have the information. People get the notification. So during the day, we could potentially set up the fee schedule that after four hours you get... You start getting charged. So once again, you're creating an incentive to follow the rules.
I mean, I wouldn't want to, like, double, sort of like, double ping somebody, like, if we have somebody who's regularly monitoring the parking, and so they're watching for that four-hour time limit and would get a parking ticket, to then also have, like, an added, like, charging fee if they were over. You know what I'm saying? Like, it seems like a double violation.
Well, we can also... We can also have it so that in the EV stations, that it's basically... So then the question is, if someone continues to charge after four hours, the cost kicks in, because if we choose to do no cost from 8:00 to 5:00, so a cost for the electric will kick in after four hours. And arguably, they've overstayed their welcome in that spot, and so they should get a ticket. But because at a certain point, the benefit that the village is providing by providing free electric now changes, because now they're overstaying their welcome and they're taking advantage. So I'm not sure that I would necessarily think that... I mean, I don't think the hit would be that hard. We can determine how we make that work based on the...
Maybe for Charlie, it's not every-minute increase?
Hmm, right.
I don't know.
I mean, the charge point...
401.
The charge point software notifies you when you're hooked up to a station of any change in the fees associated with that.
Oh, so you'll get a ding. You'd get a ding.
So you get a text message or an email saying, you know, to notify you that this station in, you know, one hour's time will start adding an additional fee. So it's all very upfront.
Lots of information. I don't have an electric vehicle, so I don't know. But it's helpful to have some to do. Yes, okay, so that's the EV.
Okay, so then I have two things. One is, can we put a clear zone around the pedestrian crossings into this law? No parking up to a certain amount by the... Because it is dangerous pulling when you walk out on the...
Are you talking about for every crosswalk?
For every crosswalk, that there is a designated clear zone where you can't park.
Isn't there a state law that dictates...
There is a state law, yeah.
Do people know that at all?
Well, I know there's... I know that we have in our code... Well, actually, it's for every intersection that connects with a state road, there's a required minimum setback for parking. But I don't know...
I can ask. It would just be nice, because we could make it bigger, or we could make it specific to certain places that are dangerous when the cars are close, you know?
I mean, I will say, there was a delivery truck parked at West Market and St. John today, and it actually extended beyond the end of the sidewalk, and I was trying to pull out of St. John, and I couldn't see the cars coming from the east.
Yeah, it's very scary.
And it was a delivery truck, so it technically wasn't parked. It was offloading and loading, but I didn't notice. Yeah, when cars are all the way up to the point of the intersection, it makes it hard for pedestrians or for cars trying to come out to see and have visibility.
Or, yeah. At the intersection, especially specifically with the state road, there is a required minimum. I want to say it's 20 feet, which isn't very much, but I'm pretty sure that our signs indicate where you... That setback.
Yeah, we have a couple of...
But that's not for crosswalks.
Yeah, they're newer, and I don't know that there is no parking clear zone. So I think it'd be interesting to investigate.
Absolutely.
And then secondary, being that I'm a visual person, is there a way that we can have this reference a map? And can we get a map created so that you can see on the map what's no parking? Is that a possibility?
Oh, and, you know, everything's a possibility. You're talking about the whole village.
I'm talking about, like, these are like 60 feet of Amherst and...
I will say that the way that... So I guess two questions for you. The way that this is set up is it take... I mean, I have spent some time with this. What are they talking about? And so it just says, parking is restricted on the following. And so then it tells you all these things, and it's like 60 feet from here and this and that. It is confusing. I don't know if there's another way... So there's basically two things. One is, to say it differently, to me, is a different project, if you will. I mean, I think that's a little bit more, like, as opposed to just adding some additional restrictions. If we want to do a little map that shows Park Avenue and Church Street Extension to show what this would... What that looks like, that's a pretty simple map. If you want the whole thing, that's a more complicated map. It just will take more time.
Yeah, I just wonder if we are going to, you know, be... If we anticipate... I think it would be helpful to know.
Oh, I think it would be hugely helpful. And what I'm envisioning is a village map on the website that you can zoom into and see where the parking is. It's just, that's a... That's a... I don't know how to do that. That's a project that will take some time that I think we can...
But you just do, like, street lines, and then it's like a yellow line on one side of the street and a blue line on the other. I don't know that it would be that complicated.
I'm just thinking, if you're gonna do the whole village, it's just... I mean, it's certainly not...
It would be so hard.
Well, let's... It would not be so hard for you. It would be a project for me. I could do it on paper. That I could do, but...
But it could be a possibility that we would have, but not part of the code. You don't think it should be part of the code? You're shaking your head.
I don't think it should be part of it.
Well, I don't think...
It shouldn't reference it.
I don't think the...
It's only maps.
Well, you could reference it, but I don't think it should be part of the code.
I don't think it needs to be part of the code, because the code is telling you what you can and can't do. The other thing that I think we should do is consider using yellow paint for where parking is.
I think that would be really helpful.
And I also think, you know, every time I come, you know, you've got the intersection, you know, the main four corners, that, you know, that 20 feet on each of the four sections, if we hashed that, you know, used hash marks, and then maybe someday, those could be curve intersections. But I think the visual on the look... On sight, I think, would be great.
I think it'd be great to, once you have those signs of no parking next to the pedestrian crossings, to have it hatched, where you can...
That could be. So, yeah, so I'll check with the attorney and the law.
I'm like hashing them, great. Like, I mean, I'm standing at the bus stop for the elementary school multiple times a day, I see cars pull up and park directly next to a sign that says no parking, and then get out and walk around and... Multiple times a day, and it's kind of funny, and I'm always there, gonna be like, do you see that sign? You just parked next to it? And so I think any additional notification, visual, because it's a sign and people sometimes don't see the sign even though it's very obvious. So something colorful, something, you know, like the yellow hashings, anything else to draw attention.
Or even, I mean, thinking of where you are. Well, I suppose it could be hashing as well, but even just a yellow line on the curve.
On the curve, yeah.
Because I think that's pretty universal communication.
Any additional, I think, added visual help is always beneficial.
Yes, I will say, there are a lot of tickets given in that particular parking spot. Okay, so I have any other commentary on Park Avenue? No, okay, here none. So I will rework the law.
Great.
And then we'll bring it back. And at that point, we'll do... It requires SEAKER, which is the environmental review, and it's determined to be a type 2. So a type 2 means no further environmental review is required. So we'll do the resolution and the SEAKER at that time.
Great.
I was gonna say, the only other thing I have for the Park Street specifically is to just reassess our parking signs.
I know, yeah, I drove out that way, and when Jake gets back, I can ask him. I mean, he may well have just used back, because it was an extra sign.
I think so. But just, I've had a few residents talk to me about how it's sort of confusing where the parking is. So I think once the law goes into effect, just do a quick reassess.
Every... I was gonna say, every other parking sign makes sense, because on the north side, saying no parking this side, makes a lot of sense. There's a... On the south side, near Linden Ave, there's one sign that says no parking here to corner, and then one closer to the corner that says no parking this side, which is technically correct, but for some people, they're confused, thinking maybe I can't park on either side. So I think it's just that one sign.
Yeah, 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 I think that's just the one. But, yeah. And even if it's just covering up this side of the street with, like, reflective tape or something to declare that that's a continual no parking spot, but...
My guess is Jake has something in his toolbox.
Probably.
Yes, and the other is, for those who are parking there, you need to park going in the correct direction. If you are going... If you are parked on the south side, but you're facing west, that is actually not correct, and you can get a ticket. You need to be going facing east, because you're on the south side of the road. Just FYI. Okay, the next one that we've talked about is committees. And our village attorney had recommended that we pass a law that gives us, the board, the authority to create and abolish committees. And so the next local law, proposed local law you have is literally to have committees that gives us the authority. Again, happy to push this forward. This is really just something I want to get on the books and get moving on. So I figured, well, let me just get it out tonight. And if you feel comfortable moving forward, great. If you'd like to wait, we can do that, too.
I'm comfortable.
So would you like to make a motion to adopt this resolution, which should be resolution?
Can we do that? Or do we need to do any SEAKER public hearings for a new law?
So we adopt the resolution, and then set the public hearing, because it's not passing the law, it's passing the resolution.
All right, okay, great. I don't... I just want to come. So we're not... I don't need you to... And we're not reviewing the committees tonight, right? We're gonna do that...
No, that's what I...
...in organization.
That's what I was initially thinking, but then when I got the local law from the attorney, it basically just says, "At its annual organizational meeting of each year or throughout the year, as the need may require, the Village Board of Trustees by resolution shall establish the standing committees of the board and shall prescribe the functions and duties thereof, and may discontinue or abolish any standing committee." And the rest is legal jargon of local law effective upon filing municipal home rule and section is unconstitutional, the rest is okay. And then it's resolved that a public hearing be held in relation to the proposed changes as set forth in the form of notice hearing after provided, at which hearing interested parties... At which hearing, interested parties shall have an opportunity to be heard. And then we just need to determine when the public hearing would be, and that notice of said meeting is done appropriately. And then there's the copy of what the notice of public hearing would look like.
So, sorry. This is a resolution saying that we're eventually going to do the local law? Or this is the local law? Because I'm seeing, like, because we don't currently have a law on the books about our committees. So we're not amending an existing law? So...
We... So this is adding a new chapter. It does say be it enacted. It does say that. However, it can't be enacted without the public hearing.
Right.
So as I understood it, this is introducing the local law that we will then now follow. And it also, because it says the village board has determined the action to amend, the zoning law is a type two action, this then qualifies as doing seeker. Because if you look, be it enacted, the resolution, like be it resolved, is that we're going to have a public hearing. And then we, then we reformally pass, formally adopt the local law.
Oh.
I will say, I, I agree, but it's a little confusing.
The law doesn't exist, but the, the
Do I have to have a seeker form in order first? I know it's just a short form, but.
My understanding is that by, by doing it this way, that this incorporates the seeker in it.
Okay.
They've, they've mushed it all together. So by, if we were to pass this resolution, that would, that would be passing seeker. Now, I'm also happy, given that it's slightly different than what we were used to, I'm happy to perhaps discuss a slightly different format.
That's fine, I just, yeah, just go ahead and get the form.
In past, we have had the short, even if it was a short form, we have had the short form of seeker and had gone through it.
God, yes.
When we passed the law.
When it's, when it's type two, there isn't, there is, the short form is for the EAF, which is an environmental assessment form, which is not required if you do seeker, if you do type two. Type two
We type two, sorry.
Type two means that there's nothing further to review. This, this will, this checks that box because if we pass this resolution.
I think, you know, I think just previously, we just had done it differently where we actually had the seeker form and just said it doesn't require anything else. And so we went through that and then we passed the law instead of a resolution to incorporate.
The joys of multiple lawyers. My understanding is both
We're hitting on the same train.
Both are effective. Ah, okay. Yeah, so basically this is an introduction of the law that, that requires a process of having a public hearing and then passing the law.
Great.
So if you're comfortable with this one, which is about as simple as it gets, I'd take a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Courtman. Second?
Second.
That's resolution number three and we are going to set the hearing date for the next board meeting.
So this would be local law, do we need to do A until it's passed?
I think this is A because this is the first one we're introducing, even though we introduced it as, the other one is A, I think this one has to be A because.
Right, because we didn't do that one, so yeah, so we'll just put A everywhere. So the public hearing needs to be held 10 days from now. We can do it at our workshop. Can we do it at our workshop? We have enough time for it because the workshop's the 27th and today is the 10th.
It only needs to be
10 days?
It only needs 10 days. So we could do it at our workshop. Unless, well, this one's pretty straightforward. There's, you know, it's like we can do committees, that's literally all it is. So why don't we do the public hearing on the 27th?
Okay.
You guys arrive with that? March 27th. Okay. So we have a motion, a second. Any other comments?
For the review of the committees is, because in the past where our rate organization meetings, there really hasn't been any like substance to the assignment of members on those committees because we are reformulating how those committees are, are they're going to, is there going to be substantive information about the committees in order to review them to see their viability with the village?
Yes, my expectation is that we may postpone the, we may not do the committees at, at the organization meeting, that we may postpone it a month. So we just have a little bit more time to talk about it and, and think about reformulating the committees and establishing the mission and what the authority is, because that's really where it comes up, is what is the, the village board should be charging a committee with a certain, and committees aside from the planning board and the zoning board are advisory committees. They're to advise the board. And so thinking about how, what, what mission we are charging the committees with and articulating that in a, in some sort of mission statement, if you will, I think is, is, you know, what is their authority? And that, that's the opportunity to give them their authority. So it would be creating those committees with a resolution, I think, that would include the, the mission and the, the charge or the authority that the board is giving them. Is my understanding of how this is supposed to go. So yes, we have work to do, but this at least gives us the legal authority to be doing this, which is a good thing, since we don't have it in our code at the moment. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then the last one, and this one again is to, to sort of put it on the table, there's more to this one, so, but we have talked about it for a year. This is for the event permit. So I'm just going to say that it's here, take a look at it, understand it. Then the idea is that we are going to create a law that says you are required to have an event permit if you do an event in the village with, under these, under certain, if you're using public property, for example, which is most of it, or if you're going to impede, you know, if you want to shut down a road, if you want. But the idea is that this, this creates the law that says an event permit is required. How the, the application is not in the, in the law, that's something that we determine if there are any fees, that's something that we determine by resolution. And so this just establishes the requirements of when an event permit is required. So I'm going to encourage that you take a look at it, read it, understand it, and, and we'll ask questions and proceed with this at the next, at the next meeting.
Great.
Because I think it's a little too soon to, to pass it, but I think we can, but it's important to get it on, get it started.
Great.
Since we've talked about it for a long time.
Are these drafts available on the building minutes or will be?
They will be.
Will be, great. I know that's late edition.
Yes, it is definitely late, late edition, as I am good at. That's Jen Knowles.
The one thing, and this is like totally, I realize as we were talking, the building envelope, the idea of a building, like when you're outside the building envelope, even if it's still owned by a private landlord and/or business has it, then you're redrafting the public space. Sometimes event permit laws refer to that.
Refer to what? So that, well, that would be like the right of way, right?
The right of way becomes like the public, so let's say, okay, the flower boxes in front of, in front of Bliss, right? Let's say you have someone, they set up a stall and they're selling goods, right? But it's not actually on the public sidewalk. It's in that like space in between. There are sometimes people discuss that as like outside the public envelope, you know, public or the building envelope, but it's still in the public, yeah, kind of public right of way. But it's like that idea of you can't set up a stand and start selling something because that would have, you know, on the regular, because that becomes, it has to be something.
Okay, this is, this is, this is why we do this and we
Yeah, I just was
Think about it because I'm not quite sure what that looks like. So would we be saying that if someone was going to set something up outside a building, that they would require an event permit?
It's
I think we prefer to that thing. So I mean, one is, one is event, an event would be, you know, one day, a few hours, what have you. If someone wants to set up a regular thing, that's more like a building permit or a site plan or.
Yeah. There is something about engaging in that space to do things that are like special uses, you know, that is like, and I don't totally.
And I'm not sure that that would fall under an event permit, I think.
Okay.
But I don't know. It depends, again, it depends on what it is.
I, let me, let me see if I can, I'll find it and see if I have the, because it just, I didn't see the reference in here and.
Yeah, and as I say, that's, that's
That's something.
Sort of the point of bringing it up now so that you all have a chance to think about it, think about the different
I'll send the example.
You know, invariably, you think you've got everything covered and then there's something else. It's like, yeah, but what about? And that's, you know, part of, that's part of what we've tried to do with, with doing sort of a test run for the events last year. But I, I'd like to get something in the code. And then again, if we find something isn't working or we need to adjust it, we can always do that, but would like to get to the point where we actually have it in the code so it's required.
Great.
Okay. So just wanting to acknowledge that we've got some meetings coming up. On Thursday this week, we are having a special workshop meeting that is going to be reviewing a proposed local law, proposed zoning amendment that, that comes, that comes out of the planning document that was done in fall related to the northeast quadrant of the village. So we're calling that new zoning code, we're calling it Gateway North. We have a gateway business district which is coming in, it's the east side of the village come, as you come in west, the idea is that it's a gateway to the village. So having Gateway North does kind of make some sense. And it covers not all of the northeast quadrant, but a significant portion of it. So on the website, there is, there's a link to the documents, so there's the, there's the original planning document, there's the proposed zoning law, and there's also the proposed zoning map. And so the purpose of Thursday, it's really information, it's an opportunity for people to come and review, ask, give their point of view, et cetera. So please, that's going to be at five o'clock here on Thursday. And the plan is to be from 5:00 to 6:00. So I think there's a 6:30 planning board meeting. But that's, it's, the, the idea is to start the process of having people understand what the zoning code looks like based on what was, what was reviewed and discussed in the planning document, so that we can, we can continue to move forward on that, on that work. And then we have our next regular workshop meeting will be March 27th. And at this point, given that it's March, I may need to have an in-between meeting on the budget because we need to have the budget up and ready to pass in April. Uh, let's see, and our next board meeting is April 14th.
Are you saying you want another meeting before April 14th?
Maybe, I don't need it.
Do you want to try and set that now?
No.
Okay.
No, because I then would have to think about it, so. I mean, if we're going to do that, it would be next week, so. I'll decide, I'll figure it, in the next two days I will figure it out.
Okay.
The other, the other reminder is that there is a village election on March 18th, which is two, two weeks, one week, one week from tomorrow.
Next week.
And it is 12 to 9:00 PM here in the village, in Village Hall, right in here, that, that door will be open. You can vote by early voting or by absentee ballot, both of which are very similar. They're different. And it's for two trustee positions, so for those. We encourage everyone to, everyone who is registered as a voter in the village to come out and vote.
Question on the early, early voting ballot, are there, I had somebody ask me and I didn't have an answer for him. Restrictions for like a absentee ballot is that you know you're not going to be here or for some other, are those same restrictions for the early? I don't think so, that's what I thought. But I was like, let me just clarify that early vote, it's just, there are no restrictions necessarily, other than general voting restrictions.
The, for other elections that are held in November, for example, they have early voting and they have a site where you go and you're using machines. Because for a village election, the village of Red Hook has determined that we run our own elections and so we don't have, you know, you're not coming into a physical place. You're just able to come in with an application to get a ballot, you fill out the ballot and you, and you put it in a blow. It's, it's basically a way of more efficiently doing early voting.
Great.
Is, is how we're meeting that requirement. Okay, now comes the, comes the, the highlight of the, of the evening is the treasurer's report. Madam Treasurer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is this her last one?
This is her last one.
Oh, my goodness.
I was, you know, I didn't, I didn't let Steve acknowledge his last meeting. I was, I was going to let that one just fly under the radar. We'll have to, we'll have to, we'll bring a cut out of you next time.
You're welcome, we're all in, Matt Laurie.
Thanks. Well, not to worry, we have a lovely treasurer in training in Mary Beth D. Phillips, who I've been working with this week, and she's off and running in an outstanding manner. So I'll be leaving you in good hands, Board of Trustees. For my final treasurer's report, March 10th, 2025, our account balances as of the end of February are general fund, $949,647.14. Water fund, $446,295.38. Our payroll clearing account has $47,514.30. Sewer fund, $228,947.09. Hearts gravel account, $5,994.48. Village green, $7,587.54. And the health insurance fund has $13,089.64. The following are our reserve checking balances, so these are all our reserved funds. Fire department, $10,457.46. Police, $17,969.36. The USDA fund has $146,210.41. Highway reserve, $603. Snow reserve, $3,452.77. Tower reserve, $18,647.31. Unemployment, $7,396.64. Court reserve, $3,472.89. And our office reserve has $1,023.90. And lastly, the monthly expenses for February out of the general fund were $195,179.36. Our water fund expended $138,775.42. The payroll clearing account spent $2,379. And the sewer fund expended $11,770.92. And I have a very exciting announcement, which is not reflected in the report, and that is that last Friday, Mary Beth and I walked across the parking lot to the Key Bank and paid the first installment of the debt for our capital sewer project. So that was very exciting. That was wired, we were not going to put a $205,000 check in the mail, because very easily agreed to. So that was the first, and they're equal payments and they are going to be made annually in March. So we're off and running toward paying off our sewer capital expenses.
That is very exciting. And those numbers would not be reflected in this report because this goes through the end of February, correct?
That is correct.
Excellent. Super. Any other, any questions, anybody?
Thank you for making history.
You're welcome.
We didn't, that's right.
And, and it was.
So I'll take a motion to accept the, the financial report, treasurer's report.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Treasurer.
Thank you.
On to reports. All right, the first is the police report, it's for the month of February. We had 287 incidents, 167 in the village of Red Hook, 111 in the town of Red Hook, nine in the village of Tivoli. And then the water tower security checks, there were 104 of those. Uniform traffic tickets, there were 57, 30 of those were in the village of Red Hook, 22 were in the town of Red Hook and five were in the village of Tivoli. Parking tickets, there were 16 in the village of Red Hook and none in the Iber Tunes municipalities. There were four arrests, three in the village of Red Hook, one in the town of Red Hook and none in the village of Tivoli. And the other is my report, which I do a couple of happily. And so I do actually start with personnel. I did miss the opportunity to acknowledge trustee Steve Appenzeller's final village meeting on February 27th. His house closing did happen on Friday, so he is no longer a village resident and therefore can no longer be a village trustee. I will be considering options for an appointment to fill his seat in the coming month, but I want to take this opportunity to publicly thank Steve for his two years on the board and extend a continued welcome to work on projects in the village. and extend a continued welcome to work on projects in the village, should he so choose. And I would also like to formally welcome our new currently deputy treasurer, Mary Beth D. Phillips, who's here with us this evening. She started last Monday. She came back this Monday, so that's a good sign. And she's overlapping with our current treasurer, Lori Urban, through the first week of April, when we will have a resolution to appoint Mary Beth as our treasurer upon Lori's retirement from the village. So welcome, Mary Beth.
Thank you.
And you have
Glad to be here.
Opportunities to say thank you to Lori, but thank you for your, it's two years, right?
Yes.
Next update is the Wyo Water Projects. State SCADA controls upgrade. That achieved substantial completion officially on December 3, 2024. Substantial completion means that it's up and running and working. It doesn't mean that the whole punch list is finished, so there are a couple of punch list items. But it is up and running and doing its thing. Cherry and Gray Street water main replacement, same thing. So achieved substantial completion on October 8, 2024. There are a few punch list items remaining. Water tank rehabilitation, that achieved substantial completion on September 26, 2024. That in particular has a one-year later tank inspection that's part of the project. So that'll happen in August. And then financing, I mentioned at the last meeting that because the project is above the originally budgeted 1.8 million, we are requesting additional short-term financing from EFC. And we've given them all the paperwork they've asked for and we're just waiting for their confirmation. Their hopeful confirmation that they will provide us with that additional financing. And it's really just to pay the final bills. And then it will all turn, be moved to long-term financing when they tell me they're ready to schedule that, which is probably not until 2026. Sewer project number one. Our major outstanding item is the single audit. We do have a draft, we have reviewed it. We're just waiting for the final, final, final review from UHY. There is also one final MWBE report from Carver Construction to be filed. And other than that, the project, as you've heard, is now being paid off. One year at a time. The sewer expansion phase two. I do want to point out there's an income survey that we are doing in the area where the phase two of the project would cover. And the reason why we're doing that income survey is currently we do not qualify based on our aggregate estimated income for the village of Red Hook. We are above the line, if you will. And so we are doing an income survey so that we can determine whether or not the actual income of those in this district would allow us to qualify for additional funding. And the funding would be grant funding. So it is money we do not have to pay back. So it's actually very important that we get that we get those income surveys back. And if you don't respond, if you get one in the mail, highly encourage you to fill it out. If you don't, someone will probably follow up and knock on your door. So we would be very grateful to have you help us out with that. Just an update on the UPSU, sorry, the union contracts. The negotiations are done, we have our memorandum of understanding. All of that is in place. The final contract, where all of the language is incorporated into a full-on contract, we are still working on that. The police contract, there's some final edits that just need to be incorporated. And then I'm still waiting on the DPW contract, so. Audit firm, just want to let you know that our controller, Michelle Zagorski, and I have met with another audit firm. We felt it was time to take a review and consider some new proposals. And so we did meet with another audit firm to get a proposal. And so we hope to receive that proposal in the next couple of weeks. And I may have further reports on that coming up. And then the last bit that I have, no, not the last bit that I have. But the next bit that I have is regarding the library. I did attend the library board meeting on February 20. The library board continues to review and update policies. This month, they reviewed and approved an operations stabilization reserve fund policy, a telecommuting policy, and a website policy. The board also approved sending a 259 letter to the school district with a request for an increase of $10,000 in funding via the school tax bill. And that falls under law 259, which is why it's called a 259 letter. But that's a law that allows the library to have the school collect monies. It is literally a pass-through, it's not part of your school tax. It is a pass-through that the school facilitates, but they have no they have no say and they're not the ones who develop it. And so they just have to approve that they'll put it on their, on the list for an elect, for a vote. So it is the voters of the school district who will say yea or nay to this increase. So they've asked, they approved, the board approved requesting an increase of $10,000 in funding by the school tax bill. For that would make it a total of $234,400. And the justification is a general request for support and maintenance of the library. Financial reports were reviewed. New board member and treasurer Grace Katchigan brings her CPA experience and expertise. She is working with a bookkeeping slash accounting firm to ensure that was hired, was it a year ago? I think it was just a year ago. To ensure that the financial reports are properly reported. The director, Alex Geller, reported on programs in circulation. The juvenile, meaning the little people, and adult programs, sorry, very young, I should say. And adult programs are gaining the most in attendance because that's where the additional program is for these age groups. Physical circulation continues to decline and e-circulation continues to increase. They have added back snow shoveling services from the proceeds of their annual appeal. The porch construction project is complete. I'm hoping that they don't need those snow shoveling services anymore this year. The porch construction project is complete. They spoke of a need for a library tool shed and the town apparently has indicated they're going to give them one that they're no longer using, but the timing on that is unknown. They mentioned that March 21, they will be having a spring concert and that the seven-part nature walk series is in the final stage of planning. And then for more detailed information, you can find their board packet on the library's website. Just takes a little bit to find it. It is redhooklibrary.org/BoardOfTrustees. And in the body of the words in there, there's an opportunity to link to the board packet. And then the one other thing I wanted to mention is we are doing a variety of updates, improvements to Village Hall. One of them that we approved using ARPA funding was the water bottle filling stations for the water fountains. And I will credit Jen with determining that we didn't need to replace the entire thing. We could actually just add a backing to the lower of the two water fountains. And so those are now in place. There was not a filter on the water fountains before. There is one now on both of them. And I'm encouraging everyone to use the bottle filler. So we will, when we use up the water that we have, we will no longer have the separate purchase water. And then the other thing, there are two other things that I wanted to mention. One is we had approved getting a telephone outside the building. It will go on the wall on the left as you're coming in. And it will be a telephone where you lift the receiver and it will automatically ring the Red Hook Police Dispatch number. And the way that dispatch number is, which is 845-758, oh wow, I'm going to get it wrong. 0060, I believe it is, because I think, yes, because the highway is 8600. 0060. It's the police dispatch and it rings upstairs in the police dispatch room. And if someone's there, they pick it up. If no one's there, it automatically rolls over to the state police. So you can come to this phone outside, pick up the receiver and you will have access to police assistance 24/7. It is a red box, it currently just says telephone along the back. Mel Burke and I are working on an alt, a different sign that indicates that it's for the police and it's for 24/7 police assistance. So if you're there for a meeting, you know, the police are, they're there before the door opens. And so that's also a way to check in with the police department. So that's one, and that is currently scheduled for Wednesday. So hopefully that will, that will happen. We had a prior schedule and it was not quite what they expected, I guess. So they keep their coming back on Wednesday, so hopefully that'll work. And then the other is we purchased new doors for the Prince Street entrance. And apparently the door is in. So now we're working on trying to coordinate all the different people that need to be there at the same time. So it looks like it'll probably be next week, perhaps. But just as a reminder, they're all glass. And so it'll be open and welcoming and it will bring in a little bit more light into the lobby. And so it'll be an opportunity to think about how we, how we, you know, we haven't quite determined what we're going to put on the glass. It may well say Village of Red Hook, Village Hall on one side and Red Hook Police Department might even say second floor so that people know that that's where they're going. But we're working on figuring that out. But that's exciting, I'm excited about those improvements that are coming. So that's it, that's my report. So next up is Deputy Mayor Kirbel.
Okay, Red Hook Together meets on the first Thursday of the month. The latest meeting was held over Zoom on February 6. County legislators Christopher Munn, Freddie Kearney, and Chris Drago spoke to the group about initiatives they are prioritizing.
Can I just interrupt you for a sec? Wasn't that March 6?
Yeah, it was. Why, I don't seem to see the dates when I.
Just wanted to double check, I'm like, wait, I thought that was last week.
You're right. legislators Christopher Munn, Freddie Kearney, and Chris Drago spoke to the group about initiatives they are prioritizing as well as issues they believe are important to address. The three members that spoke are members of the Minority Democratic Caucus, which also puts out a newsletter, the members promoted, at duchessvoice.com. The legislators collectively suggested that any constituents that were looking for ways to be involved at a county level should consider applying to serve on a legislative committee. Committees that have vacant seats are listed at duchessny.gov/department/council-legislator/appointment/list. Also present were representatives from the Family Services, which is slated to expand their offices and services available to our region with a new location in Rhinebeck. More info about the organization can be found at familieservicesny.org. Finally, concern about EMS response times to the Red Hook Central School District was raised. Staffing can be a challenge for volunteer EMS services while private ambulance providers can be a very costly service for users and/or taxpayers. The concern stems from the delay that is caused when non-one calls that cannot be served by the primary responder in a designated service area are not readily released to the next available responder. Next, the Red Hook Town Economic Development Committee is currently inactive. The Duchess County Safety Action Plan Advisory Committee. Mayor Smythe and I attended a meeting on Thursday, March 6, that was designated to elicit feedback from the Duchess County village mayors, towns, town supervisors, and highway and public works supervisors. We were given a brief presentation about the plan as well as an opportunity to speak to the various consultants and give feedback on developing aspects of the plan. You can follow along with the process at duchessny.gov/safetyactionplan. And all of these links are clickable through my report on the website. I know I'm saying them out loud, but. Village of Red Hook Communications Committee meets every first Wednesday of the month at 1:30 PM in Village Hall. On Wednesday, March 5, Karen and I, there's a typo, and I met and discussed a police phone installation as well as how we may reconfigure signage around the main entrance door to accommodate the new phone box, which she just mentioned. On February 26, I had a meeting with a Civic Plus representative. Civic Plus is our current website platform. We discussed the change to a .gov address as well as the possible redesign packages. There are different levels that you can get. We are waiting on updated quotes to bring to the board ahead of our adopting next year's budget. Village of Red Hook Human Relations Committee meets every first Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM in the Village Hall conference room. The latest meeting was held on Thursday, March 6. Historian Heather Bruegel, in connection with the committee, will be holding a public info session on the project on Tuesday, May 13 at 7:00 PM in the courtroom. We hope that anyone who's curious about the project may have questions for Heather or are even interested in adding or contributing to the research project, please attend.
What was that date again, sorry?
It's May 13 at 7:00.
Thank you.
When she really wants to be able to answer anyone's questions about the, that's where the project is, so. Bring questions, she's ready to answer them. Also discussed was the possibility of the Human Relations Committee hosting a fruit crafting opportunity at an upcoming neighbor's night. Details are still being discussed. The Village Public Works Department, the scrap metal program. They're, sorry to cross out that line on the top, sorry. Revenue received since my last report was $720. Total revenue for the fiscal year to date is $4,096.90. And since the program's inception in September 2007, donations have yielded a total of $58,959.74. Proceeds from the program go to the purchase of tools and equipment for the public works department. Residents and businesses interested in donating metal may contact the village clerk's office to schedule pickup. And finally, snow removal and seasonal parking rules. We have one remaining month left in our snow season. Please remember that till March 31, no overnight parking is allowed on Red Hook streets. Also, items may get damaged by the cloud trucks if they're left on the street edge. Please remember that if you have a sidewalk adjacent to your property, you are required to keep it clear of snow and ice within the 24 hours after the end of a winter storm. Sidewalks include the entrance to any pedestrian street crossings. So if you have a street crossing, it was clear up to the curfew. And that's it for me.
No, you gave the building a zoning. I gave you the building.
Oh, you did? That is not it for me, I apologize. The building and zoning report, building permits issued are six. Certificate of occupancy issued are two. Certificate of compliance are four. Municipal searches are one. Orders for remedy, zero. Stop work order, zero. Do not occupy notice, zero. Court appearances, zero. Complaints, the first is at 7441 South Broadway. There was work safety and it was remedied. The other one's 46 West Market Street. Illuminated signage was too large and flashing. A letter was sent. There were seven fire inspections. And then do I read all the actions that happened? I think he did.
Yeah, I think he did.
Okay. So then these are the following planning board actions at the February 13, 2025 meeting. Signage approval was granted to 7508 North Broadway. Listed under tax parcel ID. I don't think you have to do that. It's listed for retail use, the botanical holistic wellness. Number two, site plan and public hearing for St. John Street was tabled till March 13, 2025. Number three, site plan approval granted in 19 West Market Street, listed for eating and drinking establishment, which is the Bliss Juice and Smoothie Bar, which I went to the ribbon cutting, very excited. Number four, site plan tabled and public hearing set for March 13, 2025 for 12 East Market Street, listed for retail use. And that's Apotec, which is apparently a Scandinavian store. I'm very excited. Site plan tabled to March 13, 2025 for 7357 South Broadway. Renovations to the existing farm stand at Minarelli. And filing Board of Appeals, no February meeting due to no agenda. Damn.
I think you just need to mention the amount of money.
Oh, great, okay. So the village of Red Hook Building Department, the total in fees, I guess, in building permits was $1,900. I apologize for the clumsiness reading that. Good. Okay, trustee Lane.
Yes, good evening. Let's start off with materials management for the month of February. The month of February, the village highway department collected 1.89 tons of recycling. That was made up of 1.11 tons of combing, 0.2 tons of cardboard, and 0.58 tons of paper. The village also paid The village also paid its monthly fee of $211.12 for the use of the Royal dumpster service, but there were no garbage deliveries to Uproa, to the Auster County Resource Recovery Agency in the month of February. Apparently, the garbage delivery happened in very early March. Over the course of the month, the village collected $1,545 from the sale of garbage tags, which is broken down as follows, $1,209 at Village Hall, and $336 from the Red Hook Public Library. And next up, water treatment facilities report from our friends at C3ND. So during the month of February, the water treatment facility treated 6,809,761 total gallons, which is an average of 243,206 gallons per day. It's been held fairly steady since October, November time, so that's good. It's not creeping up, not yet. We also, three samples were sent out for bacteriological testing during the month of February, and they all came back absent of reportable levels of total coliform and E. coli. And during the month of February, the water treatment plant used 75 gallons of sodium hypochlorite, which comes to an average daily use of 2.7, 2.67 gallons per day. Okay. Next up, Salkill Water Shed Community. Salkill Water Shed Group had a very busy February. They held three meetings in the month of February, and I am very embarrassed to say that I did not make any of them for various reasons. But on February 5th, they held their rescheduled community meeting at the Almendorf, where the, the director of the Salkill Water Shed Committee, Karen Schneller-McDonald, gave a brief welcome to members of the public that showed up, and they also had a presentation on their revisions to the DBC wetlands regulations that recently came out. And then Amy Schein talked about the amphibian migration project. Those amphibians are probably hopping and crawling across the streets as we speak, at least on warm, wet nights. There was an update from the Bard Community Science Lab by Desiree Lyle, and then there was a discussion of the Spring 2025 Water Quality Testing Project and signup forms for that. And then the, the meeting was open to community conversations for open discussion about local water concerns and questions about water issues. The other two meetings in the month were just committee meetings to follow up on that community meeting and set up their water quality sampling project and all the logistics that go into that for identifying sites and volunteers and training for volunteers to go out into the community and collect water samples from the Salkill and its tributaries. So they, they had a lot of activity last month. And Community Preservation Fund Committee, no meetings in the month of February, but thank you, Mayor. We do have an update on the balance of the Community Preservation Fund, which as of, I think the end of February, the CPF is at $3,66,467. Quite a healthy balance. Hopefully, they're on the lookout for good projects to, to use those funds for. And finally, utility billing report. Okay. For the month of February, no utility bills issued. There were $967.08 penalties, finance charges issued, $17,473.94 of utility payments were received, and accounts receivable outstanding to the village as of March 1st were $24,581.77. And there were no bill adjustments during the month of February. Okay.
Terrific. Thank you. Can I ask about this chart? This is the first time we've gotten a chart of this. Am I wrong? We've got it before. Okay. Got it. I don't remember.
I, I got it once, and then I got, I had to do some cleanup. It's been a couple months.
Okay. And the reason why there's two, you know, those are when the bills go out. What's the deal with the April and the May, that it not, not on the same pattern? It doesn't go up like that?
I probably, the spike was probably in the last fiscal year, just based on when the, the bills hit.
Got it.
Or.
But it's just, it does have a pattern, yeah.
Yeah, I, that is a good question. Because the bills go to the law in April.
Yeah.
I don't know. Let me check on that. Why doesn't it show up? I don't know. I'll look at that.
Yeah, maybe, yes. It might have something to do with fiscal year, right? That's all, but it's not, yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah. It's, it's not correct, because we did send out a bill in April, so.
Great.
Okay. Thank you.
It's nice to, nice to see it visually. Yeah. Just have the numbers. Okay. With, and now, trustee Bradley Ricard.
Hi. Okay. So for the Village Green Committee, the Village of Red Hook has been honored in another year of being a tree city, and two of our committee members agreed to go to the luncheon this month as our representatives. I am looking forward to hearing about and reporting on their experiences. Additionally, oh, I should update this, sorry. When I wrote this, we were still looking for a few more spots to plant trees, however, we have found them. So thank you to those residents that responded to our flyers left at your doors. Our resident tree experts selected a handful of varieties that are native to the area and have a higher success rate of planting, can help diversify our canopy, and in both taller and smaller varieties. If you're interested in what options we're providing, we're going to continue to create a menu of potential tree plantings for our residents for our annual tree plantings. We're incredibly thankful to the small committee for the work that they do to ensure our canopy remains strong. And we are actively recruiting members. If you're interested in giving back to your community but don't have a lot of time, this might be the perfect committee for you, as we only meet quarterly and have annual plantings. But please contact myself or Jen Kavanaugh, the clerk. For the sewer department, for looking at the C3ND report, the Red Hook Commons produced 6,000 gallons per day, and the tests that came back.
That would be treated.
Treated, sorry. Treated, 6,000 gallons per day. The tests that came back are reported, as well, for the new plant, we treated 35,000 gallons per day. There were a couple of tests that came back that were outside of the limits, and our notice of violations were sent. We are looking to have the sand filters replaced, and we're looking at that in our, our maintenance list. In February, we continually address the issues that the wastewater treatment plant has been having, and the old plant needs some work, and we've devised a plan to reroute the flow. And when the holding tank, for all intents and purposes, is next to empty after being pumped out, we created a priority list of fixes, repairs, and assessments to tackle. This allows the team to have as much as an unobstructed view of the state of the plant and tackle the most pressing needs first, working their way down the list. In the last month, we announced our request for proposal, which we addressed earlier this evening, and we closed out the portal at the end of February, as we stated. Additionally, the team met with our representatives, again, from the New York Rural Water Association, who has experience with sewer code and functionality of wastewater treatment plants in general, and we're looking to codify the code and make sure it's fine-tuned to our system prior to the expansion. The sewer team meets every other Friday. If you have concerns about the expansion and/or are currently in the sewer use area, have comments, concerns, et cetera, please don't hesitate to reach out. There's also an expression of interest form up on our website if you are wanting to connect into the sewer, in which requires capacity, but it will put you on our list of places to consider and puts you on our radar. For the Village Speed Limit Initiative, at the end of February, the engineer had reached out to Department of Transportation to ask for guidance as they look to update some of the requirements in the next year. We're still hoping to move forward, even if we need to go section by section, in which case we would start with the speed limit initiative, and we're waiting to hear back on what DOT says in regards to their guidance. The Town of Red Hook Greenway and Trails Committee, the February meeting was canceled, and the committee will meet again March 13th, but upcoming ribbon cutting event for Salkill Phase Two by Whittaker Land Trust will be held Saturday, April 26th at 1:30, so mark your calendars, and it's in conjunction with the Rail to Trail Conservancy's National Trails Day. This event helps the team provide a target for when to get the safety enhancements in place for Aspen Wall and Kelly Roads, and the committee is also actively working on promoting the trails as off-road and safer options for traveling between schools and neighborhoods, and working through educational material to send out regarding the rules of the roads/trails, such as road safety, looking both ways, walking against traffic, and riding with traffic, et cetera. The Climate Smart Communities, the Climate Smart met last month and has created a standing meeting for the group, which will be the third Thursday of the month at 4:00 PM. We went through the assessment from the end of last year and pinpointed the reps for the committee. There was a Safe Routes to Schools subcommittee that formed that will be meeting separately. This is a specific program that helps look at the walkability and safety of our roads for pedestrians, bikers, and cars alike as they move towards our schools. The compost program is in the design phase, however, we have started to order the necessary components for the food waste hub, but also look, are looking into options for the free countertop buckets to give to our residents who sign up for the program. We're working on village branding and education material to give to residents for the compost program. Additionally, we were awarded through grant funding the opportunity to partner with Cornell Cooperative Extension again this year for resiliency planning. Our representative from CCE will be joining us at our next meeting, which is the third, I was supposed to say Thursday, sorry, at 4:00 PM. And these meetings are open to the public. If you are interested in joining the task force or just sitting in, feel free to reach out to me or the clerk. And then I'm also reading the Public Spaces Initiative report tonight. Victoria provided an update. Victoria is a committee member. She provided an update on the upcoming winter sowing class that she taught at the Red Hook Community Center on March 1st at 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The potting soil was provided by the community center, and the seeds came from the seed library, many of which were donated to the village itself. Betsy Brower and Ash Bradley Ricard were there to help run the event. The event was quite popular and had great community engagement of village residents. Victoria started off the event with a demonstration on how to start your seeds early by using plastic jugs as mini greenhouses, and then it was hands-on for those participating. There were many residents who participated in the seed exchange as well, as they brought in dried seeds from the previous garden's yield or open packets that they were not needing anymore. Many seeds were planted, brought in, and exchanged, which led to a discussion and Q and A session about the types of plants, vegetables, and times of year, and good options based on our location here in Red Hook. In other areas, they are in contact with the high school to collaborate and have more student involvement, such as through the National Honors Society for Volunteers, particularly with their annual Hella Bloom event. They discussed what they see as a useful budget for the committee. Additionally, they are looking to diversify their engagement with the community and discussed organizing, in partnership with others, a walking tour of Red Hook highlighting its history. This was Steve's last meeting as the liaison, and they wait to hear who will be there next. The Public Spaces Initiative meets the final Saturday of the month at 10:00 AM at Village Hall, and meetings are open to the public. And that is the end of my reports for tonight.
All right. Thank you. The next item is any general business that we haven't covered? Does anybody have anything else they want to bring up or add? Hearing none. The next item is public comment. If anyone wants to make public comment, it's not required, but it's an option. Seeing no one raise their hand, we do not have executive session for this evening. I do need a motion to approve the vouchers after audit. Still moved? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Still moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.